This is Governor Larry Hogan and I don't always have time to listen to podcasts, but I do enjoy listening to the Maryland Crabs Podcast.
Live from a grungy kitchen table located in Annapolis, Maryland scenic and historic capital. It's the Maryland Crabs Podcast. With each episode, your host, Tim Hamilton, John Fournay, and the occasional guest will dive in and pick apart the stuff that really matters most to you. We're too lazy to actually solve any of these problems, but we can definitely stir the pot. Schools, politics, parking in the fire lane, to those horrible people who drive BMWs. And here with this week's episode, live from the kitchen table, Tim Hamilton and John Fournay.
Hey, welcome to the Maryland Crabs. It is Thursday again at noon and-
You're lying, then we'd be doing it live.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so it's-
He's a liar, people.
Tuesday at 11 o'clock or something like that.
We got new digs though.
We do. We are here at the Commons at 209 West Street, high above West Street.
Yeah, a little echoey, but that's okay. It's the ceiling is beautiful in here, so we'll live with the echo.
It's our new coworking space and you can rent a desk by the day or the month, or a private office, or anything. If you're in the market to do it, just come on up and check out the Commons. We like it. They've got a conference room. There's a refrigerator I saw that had beer in it and-
How many breaks were we taking during this thing?
You know, I'll throw out all the, where you can follow us stuff right away. I mean, get, follow us up on Apple Podcasts, leave us a rating, leave us a review.
Subscribe.
Subscribe. You can follow us on Facebook at the Maryland Crabs, Twitter at MD Crabs Podcast. Email us at info@themarylandcrabs.com or check out all of our episodes on themarylandcrabs.com. This week, I think we're all a little bit pissed off if we live in Annapolis and we've got somebody who-
We got a new friend breaking into place.
Who really laid it out very eloquently, I think, last weekend in an editorial on the Capitol newspaper. Jimmy DeButz, who is the Associate Editor for the Capitol, Capital Gazette, is that the official name?
Capital Gazette, yeah, is our official corporate name. Nom, amateur, whatever that word is. It's a $5 word. I shouldn't have tried to use it.
The Capital Gazette, but on July 29th, he wrote an editorial, just said, "The latest Market House debacle spotlights Annapolis ineptness." And with the vote on the city council last night, if it wasn't spotlighted prior to that, last night really sort of cranked up the wattage on the light and really shown what it is. And to be honest with you, I think everybody that sits on that council has put themselves at risk for gaining that office seat, that office again. Except for Alderman Littman and Alderman Pfeifer, who wanted to go forward with it, and they're the only two that aren't running again for office.
You know, I always said that we give so much attention to the Market House that maybe more than it deserves, but maybe because that is a symbol of government ineptitude in general. And every government has that. But then you think about and say, we're talking about at least $6 million that has gone into that black hole. So it is a little more than symbolic.
Yeah, I think it's the perfect, you hit it right. I mean, it's, it is a symbol and it should be a shining star for the cities. It's, you know, it's a historical jewel. It's, it's right there at the most prime waterfront view that you could have in the city. It's symbolic of the city's inability to make change. I mean, it's like, what I've learned, I've been, I've been in the Capitol for about five years. And what I've learned is there's more political risk in actually doing something than not doing something. So I think that's what we saw yesterday, last night, is the vote of status quo, don't rock the boat. When you try to rock the boat, the people that live here and don't, they got theirs. They don't want to, they don't want anything changed. And if it's somewhat weird or different, then get it out of my face.
We were talking, and as it happens, as it usually happens, city council once again kick the can down the road, as they do with so many things. And I am being critical today. I mean, I know that we can bitch, but everything always gets kicked down the road. And they say, we're going to deal with it later and it rarely gets dealt with. But I was texting with John last night and we were talking about this before we started. What several people said is, we don't want to rush into this. And I thought, I was literally going, rush into this? We've been dealing with this since 2003. So I was telling John, I was, I was going on a Miller Lite rant, that it was, my daughter was born when this started and she's about to go into high school. We have been in Afghanistan for less time than we've been dealing with this process and we're being told that we don't want to rush into it. At some point, it gets ridiculous.
Well, I think it's just, it's the chaos of their own making. I mean, in April, they passed this legislation, hey, we're going to do something, we're going to set some guidelines. And actually, what their guidelines and what they were trying to do, I think, was Joe Budge's efforts was commendable. But you should have known in April, elections are coming in September or in the primaries and, yeah, primaries in September.
Certainly.
So it's going to be rushed. So that is the biggest bailout I've ever heard of, oh, we, we don't want to make a decision because there's, you know, well, you've had at least four years. If you've on the city council, you're the mayor, you've had four years to set a direction and you decided in April, we're going, we're going to vote on this before our end of our term.
Plus, we're, I mean, we're getting ahead of ourselves. I want to go over the history of this, but I just, one thing that nagged at me is that one of the older persons last night said, you know, I don't feel like we've had enough input. Actually, two people said that. I'm like, how can you say we've not had enough input? How much more input? And they said, well, we haven't heard from other people. I'm like, you have plenty of opportunity to let yourself hurt. We can't go door to door asking people to give us their input. At some point, you have to, you have to look at the people who want to be in the participatory process. I almost made through that. And, and take their, their input, but, but at some point, you gotta do something. And it just seems like, like you said, people are afraid to do anything.
And where is the leadership? Honestly, you know, it's like, if you weren't going around talking to people about this two years ago, six months ago, what are you going to learn the next three weeks? And then also, leaders are supposed to lead. You know, it's, it's hard sometimes to make it a controversial decision, but if you do it for the right reasons. You know, I wrote a column, I think in summer, April, February, somewhere around there, I think the ideal thing for the Market House would be Café de Mon kind of place where it's essentially, it's obviously centrally located.
Or normal, New Orleans town.
I mean, it's iconic. If you go to New Orleans, unless you don't like sugar, you're going to go to Café de Mon because it's such an iconic place and the beignets are just fabulous. So that's what we should be selling to people that come to Annapolis. Hey, come to our X. And I don't know, I don't have the answer what that would be. But just to have another cafeteria mall.
That exactly was the proposal that was put forth by Mike Ashford the last time we went through this exercise. But I want to step back because as Tim mentioned, his daughter was barely born when this thing started. That a lot of people have moved into town, have come into the midst of this Market House and may not know the full history of it.
And I often wonder, as Annapolis, more than most cities who romanticize their past, and a lot of time that past doesn't exist. I often wonder going, are we romanticizing the, the Market House the way it used to be? And I, you know, I was here for years when it was, I moved here in 98, as you did, and it was gritty and active and it was awesome. I mean, so I, so I'll give Annapolis a pass.
People, somebody mentioned, you know, that there's successful markets, similar markets in Baltimore was, you know, the Cross Street and was it that kind?
It was not-
Absolutely. It was, it was a vast, we'll say open 5,000 square foot-
But grittier.
With concrete floors, there was no tile. It was not, and they had little booths. I mean, they had candy-
Smoke, steam, noise.
They had oysters, they had a chicken. They, I think they had two people that cooked. They had, the big cheese was in there, which now has a store, but they had a little booth. And it was very similar to other markets. I mean, you'd see like the canvas or plastic, you know, whatever curtain is hanging between them. And it had, I think it had two wide way aisles and one long end to end. And it was jamming. I mean, to the point where you go down there and you'd be like, uh, this is bullshit. I'm out of here, you know, to go someplace else. Yeah, which made me laugh when Harvey Blonder says a couple of weeks ago, well, you know, if, when we get busy, we can always go to Buddy and get foods. I'm like, well, how often has that happened? Uh, that you've got to run across the street to get additional food.
But then the hurricane came.
But it was right there. Uh, and it needed repairs. The building was actually structurally needing repairs, thankfully, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, not to romanticize it too much, because I mean, it was awesome. It was great, but the, the building was turning into a shithole. I mean, it was, it was showing its age. It really did need that. And the flood certain, the surge certainly didn't help matters any. So you can't blame the city for saying, all right, we're going to upgrade. But for some reason, and this is where it gets murky.
Well, what happened? The hurricane, the hurricane came in, caused some additional damage and the city said, well, we're going to take advantage of this situation. And we are going to take all of the tenants and we're going to say, hey, dude, you're out of business for six months. We need to re-roof and do whatever we need to do. And I can't remember exactly what the things were going to do. I think there was an air conditioning involved in there and everything else. So they displaced all the tenants with the promise that when they were done the renovations, they were going to come back in. Somewhere in the middle of that, the city said, well, you know, Dean and DeLuca would be really good here. And they went and they started to negotiate with Dean and DeLuca. They started to negotiate with Annapolis Seafood and to bring in there as well. And I'm, I don't have the exact timeline of when they got each of them, but in the end, when it reopened, there were probably 15 businesses. And make no mistake, these are really small businesses. These are one and two people type operations. You know, somebody's baking cookies in the morning. Coming in, selling them during the day, goes home at night and bakes them again. Out of business, just, just gone. Some, the only people that survived, I believe, were the big cheese, right?
Right, yeah.
Uh, which got a spot right there on Randall Street. I don't, you know, Mahoyan Chicken was a little bit, he jumped up into Cheap Cheap in the Festival of Riva for a little bit, but that's gone now.
And by the way, we ought to say that a lot of the history we're getting from this, I don't know, Jimmy, if you have ever read this, it was, there's a blog here called Capital Punishment.
Annapolis Capital Punishment.
Right, which was about 10 years ago and that was Brian Gill, who owns a catering company.
Oh, no, 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 that was-
I'm sorry, Annapolis Politics?
Yeah.
Anyway, so he, he had a phenomenal-
We'll find it and link it in the show notes.
Yeah, we'll have the show notes. But he had the, it was Brian Gill and he spent a lot of time tracking everything down, including emails and stringing everything together. So he broke down the definitive history of the Market House, which was when Mayor Moyer contacted Dean and DeLuca and who pulled out, whoever. And it was a long history and we'll link to that, but it was really amazing. So we pulled a lot of our knowledge for what it was.
So the political disappointments have gone, I mean, that's, that's pretty shady to begin with, as you would not give the people who were there originally a chance to-
Exactly. And the contention that, and Brian's article, and I have no reason to disbelieve it, was that Dean and DeLuca was a non-starter. That we, that the common knowledge right now is that they pulled out and they're saying, no, they were never in. That, and, and when they said we're not in, it was seen by the city as negotiating ploy, but it wasn't there. And there's a lot of problems with that concept anyway, because I mean, I'm not, I'm not a business guy, but where do you put parking? How do you get that much traffic? How do you, you know, how do you operate as a retail business in an area that's not retail friendly, especially when it comes to high volume and they need the high volume? So they replaced them with the new vendors after expelling the former vendors. But the big problem at the time was the air conditioning, because they didn't take the air conditioning into account when it came to the design. That include the kitchens and the heat that was generated by the ovens and everything. So it was, it was under-engineered badly. So they got, they rented a system first by some account, $10,000 a month, and I'd have to check the numbers, which was this bulky air conditioner.
Took up five parking spots.
Took up five parking spots. And that went on for the better part of two years, at 10 grand a year. So you had vendors, then all the vendors vamooseed all at once. Like in the middle of the night, they pulled a Baltimore Colts and they were gone. Like you came in and everything was gone. There was a pizza place, there was a donut place, there was, they, they-
That seems to be the way to leave the Market House. That's what happened with the current.
So then it was re redesigned at that point with geothermal and they, they red-
This is going into the Cohen administration?
Yes. So it was re redesigned because I think the common wisdom was that the, the original redesign was not adequate for what they wanted, so they redid it. So what you're seeing now is the second iteration since 2004. So-
And somewhere there's air conditioners in storage someplace that-
Oh, so they weren't renting, they were buying them? They bought them? Wow.
The city can't use. And you know, ultimately Mayor Cohen got it open several days before his defeat. And it was, you know, with the chosen Harvey Blonder to run it. But I mean, in the interim, I mean, there were, Homestead Gardens was in there at one point and they, they built out. Fractured Prune was in there at one time.
Seaside Pizza. There was, there was a bunch of, which is awesome pizza, by the way.
There was a hamburger joint from the eastern shore. I can't remember.
Wasn't Vicaro's in there?
Yeah, they were the ones-
That's the one I'm totally missed, because I love Vicaro's.
Well, I'll tell you, Vicaro's, they were the ones, was that the sandwich place or the, the-
Vicaro's was Italian pastries.
Right. And they got screwed because they were convinced to stay in when everyone else went out. So they were the only ones in there for a long time and then they redesigned, they kicked them.
They did sue the city.
They did sue. So there's plenty of blame to be, so that's the history. So there's plenty of blame to spread across several-
I love Vicaro's. Like every time I go to Baltimore and Italy, we go there. And so when I, when I, when I read about that, that was one of those, I was like, I have a vendetta against the city.
So this has been going on for at least 13 years, since 2003, 2004. So the question is, can the Market House work? I mean, can, can you recreate what it was prior, previous to 2003, that whole organic collection of businesses and just that, or can, can you design that? And if, if so, can the city do it? I think the city's proven it cannot.
The Mayor Panalides, I talked to him on, because I, you know, I feel it's obligation at least to talk, if I'm going to write something critical, I want the mayor, because specifically because I use his name. I didn't use the rest of people's names in the, in the article, because I figured that as a collective whole, they have had time. But I talked to him on Thursday and he was saying that his vision, that's why, you know, what I asked him is his vision for, and he's like, he'd like to see it like it was when he grew up. You know, there was actual vendors and I don't know at that time if there were fresh produce. When I think about the ones in Baltimore, I think about fresh produce and like you said, seafood.
I mean, there wasn't a huge, I mean, it wasn't, you weren't going there to shop and spend hours there.
But if you're walking home or on the way-
You have a loaf of bread.
Yeah. So I mean, I can see that as a, you know, if, if, if it was like, like the Cross Street Market or, or, you know, Lexington's a huge one in Baltimore, so it's not going to be that big. But if it was something where, I can see that. If, if that's what worked there one time, fine. I just think, and really it's a smaller, smallish space. You know, it's not that many vendors. I just, I have a hard time blaming that's going to work in the long term. It hasn't worked in the last five years or four years, so.
Under the, under the vision that Mayor Panalides has.
Yeah, or even the vision he inherited, you know. So to be fair for him, he did inherit this. Now I think-
I agree. Yeah. He got, I mean, people are starting to kind of, well, people can, can point their fingers. I don't think Mayor Panalides is, you can't point a very long finger.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's his fault in the sense of it's what he inherited and his, his big talking point.
Or Josh even. I just-
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the money, I think when people see $6 million thrown into anything and they don't see, because how many people in the city of Annapolis go down to the Market House every day? Or, you know, so it's, it's not something they, if they, if Forest Drive, you put $6 million in Forest Drive, you probably have parades, you know. But, uh, but, so I understand that, but I do think it's his responsibility, Mayor Panalides' responsibility to have a vision. If his vision is, I just want it to be kind of what it is and be open, that's fair. That's a fair argument. I don't agree with that. Uh, but I think the city's council and the mayor have failed to, to project what their, what their vision is. What do they want? I had to ask him that because I don't know, and I'm not probably not, I don't think it was a very substantive answer. I mean, it's good to have what you wanted as a kid, but what worked in the eighties is not working now.
So what's, I mean, what's the difference between what he grew up with and what we, we saw when we first moved here, which was very successful versus? And I'm not going to sneer and say food court, because you know, if they had vendors in there, nothing against the vendors who are there now. I guess, I guess, you know, why can't it work? Why, why can't we get what we have in Boston and Baltimore?
What the mayor grew up with are identical. You've got to remember the mayor's 31 or 32, maybe 33 now. So I mean, he was-
Yeah, he's remembering when he was a little kid.
He was 15, I don't know, 15, 16. I mean, I don't know, but I mean, it was, it was filled with St. Mary's kids. They would, they would walk down after school.
So what's the difference between what it was and what it is now? Let's be specific, because I think everyone's speaking in generalities now when it comes to-
I think there's a price point and I think there's a variety of the merchandise that's offered.
Well, we said, well, hold on, but all right. So there's, there was Cheap Cheap Chicken, which everyone, that's the first thing they talk about. There's chicken there now. That's actually not bad. There's burgers then, there's burgers now. There's seafood then, there's seafood now. What is the difference between what it was and what it is now?
Well, I think, and I don't, I don't have, we've written about it. I don't know the exact price point per square foot. I guarantee it's a lot more expensive now. And that's why they're probably rotating it and out.
I don't know if it's hilariously expensive. Like if I get a sandwich there and I've seen the sandwiches, they look good. You know, it's seven, eight bucks and the big cheese is that much, you know, which is excellent. I love it.
Well, I guess the point is, that's how much they can sell it for. They probably can't sell a sandwich for $9 or they would.
Well, and it's all subsidized right now. Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. And so I, I think it has to be something that's special.
Well, let's put it this way too.
Because you can get a burger in a lot of places now.
The store, the, all the vendors who were in there previously was, was paying little or in some cases, no rent and they still couldn't make it. That's an issue. I mean, that, that's, I mean, so I, I think the problem, Jimmy, what you said before is that you talked to council and the mayor about what their, what their specific vision is. And you're right, they all kind of weasel out of it. And I am saying weasel out of it, because everyone has different visions. But I think if you try and, and qualify, how is it different in the way it operates now, which is empty? You go in there at any given time, it's empty. I'm not being critical and being un- un- un-
I know, I mean, it's-
But, but what's the difference between the way it was then and the way it is now? What could, if you could wave a magic wand right now, how would you, money's not an object, getting through council's not an object. How would one transform this Market House into something that's bustling and thriving and viable?
If, if it was in a vacuum, you'd put a great crab house there, right? Because that would, that would be a critical thing.
Because we don't have any crab houses in town. We don't.
Well, we, well, we have people that sell crabs. I, I think that would be the easy thing if there was no other people selling crabs. But I think you've got to have a, I don't know if, I don't know if, if, I don't think a bar type thing, I don't think that works.
Well, that's, that's kind of a whole-
See, now we're falling into that where, where we're given the power to change it and we're all kind of like, I don't know.
I would find some kind of specialty, like, and I love Cajun food. There's no Cajun, there's no, and I don't know if people would come here, but you could have crabs on the menu. You could have crab cakes.
No, but are we talking, so in, in Jimmy world, are we talking about a big restaurant?
Yes, it'd be, it would be a, it would be a one, you know, okay, I mean, step back. I love Cajun food, but I also love Old Stein Inn in Edgewater.
Sure, love it.
Brilliant place. We're trying to get, I live in Severn Park and my father-in-law was trying to get them to have a northern expansion, because we don't want to go all the way down to Edgewater, but we do. I would build a German beer hall there. It's, it's got the size to have lots of tables, you know, and so I'm thinking outside the box. But I also know there was, um, Blobbs Park was successful.
Right. Regina's in Western Annapolis was very successful.
And I think, you know, we, people can be critical millennials or whatever they want. They, craft beer is back. We've got, we've got- Why couldn't there be, I mean, there's a Hofra House, my favorite beer is Hofra. They have a Hofra House in Pittsburgh. It's huge. It'd be three times as big as what the Art House is. That would be a unique destination. When I, when people are going to Pittsburgh, go, go to Hofra House. You have great beer, you have great food, there's live entertainment. So there's mine. If I could, if I was, if I was mayor of Annapolis tomorrow, my vision would be to bring a beer hall.
Are you ready?
You want me to announce right now? Well, I mean, and that's, and that, you know what, kidding aside, um, this column that I write has been great. I mean, if I were to run, there are several positions I've put down. You know, I don't think the county should be running golf courses. I don't think the city should be running retail outlets. At least, you know, you can disagree with what I write or my opinion, then that's fine. I encourage you to do that. But I've spelled it out exactly. I can't, I would challenge any of the people in city leadership to do the same.
I'll tell you what, why don't we take a break and when we come back, we'll talk specifically about what you said in your excellent op ed.
Sounds good.
Hey folks, this is Tim Hamilton, your favorite co-host of the Maryland Crabs Podcast. Besides being hilarious and charming on this podcast every week, I'm also a marketing professional with clients all over the region. I buy advertising and media for my clients, including TV, cable, newspaper, magazine, Facebook, blah, blah, blah. And this may surprise you, but I still buy direct mail. I know it sounds very 1978, but to be completely honest, if you have a compelling message to convey and you do it in a creative way, direct mail is dollar for dollar, one of the best advertising channels out there, especially for small businesses who don't have much in the way of a marketing or advertising budget. And if I decide to use direct mail for a project, I call Posthaste mailing in Annapolis. I've worked with Jack Ellis, the owner of Posthaste for almost 15 years now on countless projects, and he is, in all honesty, my number one most trusted vendor. In fact, whenever I find myself in a crisis, a sales slump, an event that looked like it was going to fall on its face, a new product launch that was pushed up a few weeks, my very first phone call is always to Jack. He always gives me the answer I need. Maybe not the answer that I want, but one that gets me out of that particular jam. I'm not kidding. He has saved my job on more than one occasion. Seriously. So what does Posthaste mailing do? Well, they do mailings, duh, that's in the name after all. But it's Jack's decades of experience that gives you the best bang for your marketing buck. Do you want to micro-target certain customers or neighborhoods or businesses? Jack can pull a list for you that makes sure that your mailing gets into the hands of your target demographic without the advertising waste that you get with other media. That means that if you have a small budget, you can still get the results you need. And if you need printing done, Posthaste mailing can do that too. Postcards of any size, pamphlets, variable data printing, cut sheet laser printing and a bunch of other printing terms that I don't understand. But Jack understands them and he knows what's best for my business and how I can get the best bang for my buck. So if you're a business owner and you've never considered direct mail, give Jack at Posthaste mailing a call to see what he can do for you. I promise you that you will be surprised at the options you didn't know were available to your business. Who knows? Maybe someday Jack can save your job too. And we're back with Jimmy DeButz from the Capital Gazette and we're talking about his op ed that ran on Sunday, right?
Correct.
Sunday about the Market House. This is one of myriad op eds I've read in the last 13, 14 years. And this one was probably expressed the most frustration. I think you called it a spaghetti on the wall experiment. The government spaghetti on the wall experiment, where this is yet another iteration of, let's just throw this out and see what happens. And, and in last night's council meeting, I saw basically them tripping over themselves, going backwards from what they proposed last month. So I think that's the frustration that-
Yeah. I mean, that's the thing. It's like, if you're like, I was a business reporter for several years and, you know, with business people tell me like, hey, you tell us what the rules are. We're going to follow those rules. We'll adapt. And so stability and reliability are huge when you're trying to run a business. And when you have somebody like these three groups that, that put in these bids, you know, they put their all heart and their effort into it, only to be kicked down the road, like you were saying earlier.
Let's get beyond the heart and soul of putting in, and the sweat equity they put into this. There were architectural drawings that were involved. This, this was not a cheap proposal.
I would have been livid last night had I put that much time into an RFP proposal and to have the council saying, we don't want to rush into this or, and not even say that we don't find anything wrong with it, but just like, well, we're not sure, we're going to kick this. I would have been, I would have been furious if that happened.
Yeah, that's thousands of dollars. Architects aren't doing that pro bono. This is, you know, this is not something they did lightly. And yeah, I would, I would have been livid. Like I said, I think my article was, the frustration is there. I mean, obviously, at least two of these groups, if they, you know, if they're going to delay till next September, two of these groups aren't going to get picked. Possibly a third, if they do another RFP. It's, it's very possible new council comes in and says, hey, we're going to put a new proposal out, which, let's say they do that in December. Bids in by March or so, so you're probably looking at next January being started. Two of these groups have already, that's, you know, six, eight months of, of time and effort. And if I'm a business in Howard County or Baltimore County and I'm looking to expand, I would cross off Annapolis. This is the way they treat people in their own community? Why would I even think about?
Someone last night, and I don't know if it was Ross, someone said, well, we have, and everyone kind of laughed, we have the reputation of being difficult to do business in the city. And everyone kind of laughed. I'm like, that's nothing to laugh at. It's, especially now.
They're laughing because it's true. They know that, they know in their hearts that this is-
The fact, we've gone, we have railed on the podcast and privately, just about how difficult it is to do business within the city. And last night was a perfect example of it. Absolutely the textbook example of why businesses don't want to come here. I'm, I'm really pissed off about this.
And I, I look, I mean, when I first came here in 2012, the city had the Annapolis Department of Educ-
AED.
Yeah, that's economic development. One of those AED.
We had a bunch of them.
And so I'm not saying they, they did anything good or, or were functioning well, but at least they were a conduit between the business community. I don't, and this, we're getting a little hype about how the city and the county are working together. The last night does not show me an example of government knows how the two treat the business community.
When you said that too, you said in the article, you're saying, the city government has no business in business. However, the problem we have here is that the, we can't sell it. Now, there is some, I've, besides commenters on columns that we've talked about, I have, I think last year, I recall where there was an opinion that, that made by the city attorney that maybe would, we, the city would be able to sell it, which at this point, I think everyone threw up their hands and said, do it.
And I, and I understand if, I, I advocate for, so I don't think they should be running the Market House.
They're horrible at it.
Yeah. So I think if, so I'll take two, the, the one position I have is that I, if they haven't had contact with the, the family, there's some kind of bylaws that say if they were to sell it, it goes back to, if it, if it's not a Market House-
The family.
It goes back to the family.
Well, no one knows who they are.
Nobody knows who they are. I'm sure if they sold it, somebody would pop up, right? Do your due diligence, find the family and say, you know what, right now you get zero.
That's like a movie where you're just living in Arizona and all of a sudden you get a call from, well, I guess I'll move in and run a Market House.
So you got, you get, you're getting zero now. We want to sell it, want to get out of it. We'll give you 5% just because we don't want any more legality. We were tired of this. That's what I would do. You would find, and again, it takes leadership and creativity to do that. So that's what I would do. Understanding though, that if you did that and whoever you sold it to, it failed, then you would have it empty. So I understand the cities, you don't want that just sitting empty.
And we're kind of used to it.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess the question, and so, you know, Joe Budge's legislation to create a system to find a suitable tenant was laudable in a sense that they say, we want some, we want there to be, you know, community events or farmers market. That's good. I think those things would serve the community well. And I think the big thing is, and we're getting back to what you're asking about, what would make this successful? I've said for a long time, I think the city needs to do a lot better job recruiting people to live in the city. The people who would shop at a, you know, fresh market would be people who live in the city. So it's kind of the chicken and the egg. We don't have people, we don't have an influx of people living downtown, but we have lots of, lots of the, the space above our, the main street businesses are empty.
I see what you're saying.
So we want, you should be driving people to in and what-
I gotta be honest, I mean, to that, I mean, to that point, so, you know, I don't see, like, could we say that Ward 1 really supports downtown businesses? I mean, aside from t-shirt shops and, you know, so like restaurants, maybe, but you know, people always say, we want the rookies market back. I don't think Ward 1 residents would, would do that, the people who live in Murray Hill and out off Duca Kloster. However, to your point, I think that if, you know, the people who live on the apartments on Main Street and Maryland Ave and then along King George and all, you know, they probably would.
Why wouldn't, if you're, if, you know, if you're not living in Baltimore DC, if you're a young person.
Right.
Why wouldn't you? I mean, it's a, you know, it's a good place. You know, it's, it's not as exciting, you know, as Baltimore DC, but you know, it's a great place. I love Annapolis. You know, I think when I first came here before I even worked here, I was like, this, I love Charleston, South Carolina. It reminded me a lot of Charleston history and it's just a waterside. It's, it's a great community. Why wouldn't you? Why wouldn't you want to live here?
Can we talk about the, the four groups? Because one dropped out. The, the four groups who wanted to, who put in bids.
Right. You had Carolyn and David Marquise, who own Chesapeake Brewing Company, which is a former Grapes and Purple Tooth right near the Lowe's. And they proposed sort of a combination of a tourist tub, somewhat market type of a thing, also with selling wine and beer to go. I guess similar to like Annabeth's on Maryland Avenue type situation. You've got Jody Danix group, which had some input from Gavin Buckley, although he wasn't part of the group legally and technically. A very successful restaurateur for the Upper West Street and largely responsible for the revitalization of mitter to out, mitter, mitter? Middle to outer West Street and, you know, owner of several things. And he's actually paired with another Forest Drive successful business. The, I'm drawing a blank on their names, but they own the cheese, the cheese shop and Pock Teller place. And then you've got, uh, Mary Giolitti came through with Giolitti's Deli and she was essentially looking to replicate what she does up in parole.
And that seemed to be the crowd's favorite during the last meeting until halfway through the testimony, someone said they just withdrew and the air just went out of the room.
Yeah, that's, and again, and I was talking about the, the German, that, that was the least is setting apart, you know, people always worried about, you know, competing with existing businesses. I don't, I get that. People are territorial. They don't want, there's a finite amount of people. So that would- So that would have been at least a, a different business downtown.
Right. Right. And then the final, the final one was Harvey Blonders, which was the Annapolis Oyster Company, which involved a renovation, was involved a full bar and essentially a restaurant with a market outside.
And he's been managing the renovations, the market house for the last-
Right. He's been managing the market house for the last five years. He claims that he's, he claims that he's lost $5 million, or sorry, lost $900,000 over five years. And I, I do believe that. Yet the mayor has been campaigning that it's been open every day since he's been mayor and making money.
Well, because that, that those-
Maybe that's making money for the city.
Well, I think those are revenues, not including expenses.
The last time I talked to the mayor about that, it's, it's making, it's not operating, the operating costs are not costing the city. City still has debt on the renovations. So from a year to year operating budget, no, it's not, it's in the black. But if you're counting, which must be wood, if you have a mortgage, you have to count that as part of your, so yeah, so it's, it's making money. It's not draining, but it's not making this.
And that, that was part of the argument that was several council sessions ago, where they moved the market house from its own enterprise fund into the general fund. So they can, they can't really track to see where that goes.
So let's bring it up to the meeting last night. So the meeting last night on the market house was hours regarding the market house testimony.
Yeah, there was two and a half hours. You can watch the video on the Annapolis City, Annapolis.com.
Dot gov, probably.
Dot gov, website. And it was about two hours of public testimony on this. And then the council debated probably for a good hour and a half before they made a decision at 11:15.
But you can't gloss over what happened in that hour and a half where it was just one-legged ducks going in circles for the most part. Where they're, they all of a sudden were, were backtracking on the RFPs, saying that the process that they laid out was being rushed. And, and so at one point they wanted to, on the fly, they wanted the two groups to merge their operations into one entity.
Oh, yeah.
Which was ridiculous.
Rhonda Pendell Charles.
That was embarrassingly ridiculous suggestion, let alone in a council meeting.
And then she's trying to broker this, which is identical to what they tried to do and ultimately lost on the first round of the Energy Park. When Alan Moir was here, they had two competing bids and the city council said, well, you know what, we're going to declare them all non-responsive unless you guys want to get together.
Yeah. What I think is funny about that is that-
And they said, well, later.
Well, I think it's a perfect point because they tried to broke, in one sense, they tried to broker a deal or a alderman woman tried to broker a deal. And the other sense, there's, they're hiding behind the city attorney who says, well, they don't, they don't, none of them meet the criteria. But I'm thinking you had two work sessions in July. After the first one, no, no red flags. After the second one, no red flags. You, you come to a city council meeting. I, I was understanding that the work, the work sessions were a chance for the public to have their input. And also to help the people who've submitted these bids, the people who've put this time and money into this to say, you know what?
Knock the edges off.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, okay, we see where you're going, but if you want to meet the criteria, maybe you do X. So, so it's, again, I think it's just a total-
You succinctly put it into, into your editorial that the city, you know, seemingly fast-tracked this when Joe Bud introduced this. And this process probably should have been introduced a year ago. They knew this lease was-
But now the complaint by the very people who laid it out.
And now they say, okay, we have this deadline set and it's this deadline, this deadline, this deadline. And then like, yeah, no, but we're not going to listen to that.
Now, and now to, to Jared and Ian's, and I'm trying to remember the vote, to Jared's credit, he was the one basically saying the same thing that we are saying right now. And Ian agreed with him, but everyone else backtracked and has been kicked to September. And in all reality, nothing will probably be done till after the election.
And again, I don't think, I, I think the backtracking may be needed. I don't say it's legitimate because of what they did, because as it came out throughout this hour and a half of deliberations last night, it became painfully obvious to me that 90% of the council looked like they were high school students that just walked into like an AP physics class, that they had no idea what's going on. I, I don't think they read the proposals. I don't think they read the code. I don't think they knew what, what was supposed to be in the market house, other than what, oh, this sounds good. And certainly when Gary, the assistant attorney was talking, he was saying this and this and this. And I mean, one thing I pointed out early on, I said, every one of those proposals, including Giolitti's, had a booze component to it. The city council has nothing to say about the ABC issuance of a liquor license. They're a totally independent body. So what do you say to Harvey Blonders? Say, yeah, okay, go ahead. Cool. Open a bar and, you know, have dance until 2:00 AM or whatever the heck you want to do. And the city ABC doesn't issue a license then.
Was that the issue with Compromised Street with the restaurant pulling out there? Was that they were going in under the assumption that they were going to have a 2:00 AM license?
No, I had, I had heard that.
I don't even know enough to gossip about it.
They pulled out of that and they put that on, that, that's what, that project's pretty much on hold now because they can't figure out what to do with it. But they pulled out just because of the bureaucracy with the city.
Well, I knew that. I heard.
And they, and they, and they said, I've, I've had enough. We've jumped through enough hoops. And they went out and they bought Deep Creek. I don't know whether they bought it in parallel with what they were developing or whether they moved out of here to do that. But now John Bruno has a couple pieces of steel beams down on City Dock.
It's beautiful. I mean, it's just like I remember.
So you know what's funny?
Took care of the beauty.
That's right.
So Jimmy's, your, your op ed, had you written it today rather than two days before the, the city council meeting? They were fulfilling the prophecy. They did everything that you said that shouldn't be done was done in that meeting last night.
Yeah, I mean-
We can accuse being critical of the city or just kind of, this is one day that I'm not going to apologize for. I am so livid after watching the meeting last night, but to your point, the city shouldn't be in the business of business. And last night, they were as much saying that, saying that we shouldn't, we don't know what we're doing. But then they want to direct what it should be. So they keep contradicting themselves. They will not give up control of something that they have demonstrated that they cannot do.
I wish this was an example of like, of corruption where they're like holding out for the favorite thing because-
Oh, I wish it was.
Then they'd go, they'd go, oh, okay, maybe something's coming. But this, this is just, this is just ineptness. I mean, if, if it was something they were corrupting, like, hey, at least something's getting done. But no, they have no idea what they're doing.
But there are plenty of people to blame for this. And I blame the Moir administration more than anybody. I, I blame Mayor Moir and the Moir administration and, and some of whom are still involved in this to this day. And I, I will lay the blame on the feet. And I think that there's been messes to clean up for every administration since. But everyone has put their own stamp on it. Up to now, they, they have an opportunity to finally put this to bed. And last night they demonstrated that they are just going to continue the same policies that were pushed forward by their predecessors of just inaction and ineptitude and just incompetence. I'm not going to play it. And again, I have to keep saying, this is going to put an asterisk for Littman and Pfeiffer for the ones who said, let's move this forward.
Yeah. And it is funny, the ones that are leaving are the ones that actually took a stand.
Sure.
Because they didn't, I mean, it would be easy. It's, I mean, it is the easy thing to do, just to go, hey, well, we tried and let the voters decide and I-
Now, John's point, John's saying, look, that, all right, they may need more time for this. And if, if that's true, then fine, let's not get mad at last night. Let's get mad at the fact that, that the process was broken that they introduced. Then you, you either screwed it up last night or you screwed it up in the beginning.
Yeah.
But someone do something.
Yeah. Two weeks ago, they should have come out and said, hey, you know, our law, city of law looked at this and looked at the proposals. And we see some things that we need to figure out. We need another week. We need another two weeks, whatever it may be. And we're going to postpone from July 31st to September 3rd and, and done that before to give that out. But no, it was all, boom, no, we need to do it the 31st. We need to do it the three reverse and get it done.
That's a perfect, because I think they were, the bids were due like June 29th or something like that.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, they had time to review them.
And then you look at David Gerald, who was the acting city manager last night, because Tom Andrews was on, on vacation. I mean, he says, once you say one of these proposals is good, that triggers a months-long process of negotiation. And we've got to negotiate, well, can they work with Hopkins Plaza? Can, what are we going to do with parking? What are we going to do with renovations? Can we expedite permits? How long is it going to be closed? Can we get them a liquor license? Can we, you know, all this has to come back to negotiation. Absent the, oh, we need more fresh produce as opposed to prepared foods and we need more t-shirts or whatever the hell they're going to put in there.
Can you say that too, by the way? And I'm, in a former life, I was involved in that. Fresh produce did not do anything down there. People say they want fresh produce. It didn't, it didn't-
It doesn't move.
It doesn't move. It does. People say they want certain things and that's where I blame Ward One. Well, they say they want things, they don't.
Well, they want them, but they only want them one time a month. And so it doesn't help you.
Well, it's convenient. Yeah. But I mean, I think, I think then at that point, they should have realized that this process is probably from the point that you say, yeah, we're going to go with you.
Like if they voted last night.
Is going to be a six-month to a seven, eight-month deal. So this should have been way before year. And I mean, everything that you've said, the way this makes the city look, I mean, business friendly, I mean, you can take a look at the, whether you'd like it or not, the East Portlanding project and the, the abnormalities that have flown with that. I'm starting to see it all, all the hairs standing on the back of people's necks for the Starbucks that's going in on Forest Drive. Oh my gosh, the city didn't, you know, tell anybody about this and now we are. And the problem, I told people, I said, no, it's not. I said, you are only involved and interested when it jumps in your backyard.
Exactly.
The city has had it on their website and it's been on the monthly spreadsheet that Planning and Zoning puts out and it's been on the monthly-
Yeah, but you're, you're a policy wonk, so you follow those.
That, that's fine. And if, and if you're concerned about your neighborhood, then you need to do, then you need to do that too. Although I do believe that the aldermen, I think that's probably part of their job.
True.
That they should say, hey, these are the developments that's going to impact our thing, but that's a different story.
I mean, yeah, I think Joe does a good job of kind of keeping Eastport folks aware. It's part of your responsibility. Yeah, Ward One. Is that Ward?
Ross.
Ross, I'm saying Ross. Sorry, Ross. I'm sorry, Ross. Yeah. Yeah, I think to your point, John, that it would have been nice and, you know, the government, I've never met or seen a government, a new administration take over any form of government who doesn't look for efficiencies. It's my favorite word. I would want to be in the efficiency business because everybody has a study. But I think if, if it would have been nice if they would have said, okay, we're putting this RFP out. We know you want to do liquor because everybody had liquor in there. We're going to fast-track these things. And these are, when you get accepted, XXX are going to be, you know, approved.
They did it for the yacht club. They fast-tracked it. The yacht club demonstrated to me that if the city has the political will, they can move things along at a nice rate.
Yeah. That's a great, that happened overnight.
I, I will say December 13th to January 1st.
Yep.
They were out of, out of Compromised Street and in-
They blew their cover right there because any project after that, like something like this that has a public interest and they say, well, it takes forever. You say, well, the yacht club with all the politically connected people who belong to it and everything, that moved along at light speed. Don't tell me you can't do that. Efficiencies are there if you're properly motivated.
That's, that's a great point. And yeah, I mean, that's just, look at the club, who's on the club list, I guess. I mean, if you can get those, if you can get those people on your, your, your bid, maybe you can be fast-tracked.
Yeah.
Well, let's take a break and then we'll come back and talk about the future and we'll, we'll-
If there is one.
If we, should we bitch a little more? I think we should.
Okay.
Hi, this is Anarundel County Executive Steve Schu. We hear the headlines every day. Heroin, fentanyl, even elephant tranquilizer. But addiction usually starts with prescription drugs. Don't be silent about this problem. Talk to your children. Ask your doctor to provide only the minimum number of pills necessary. Go to denialisdeadly.org right now for the tools you need to stop heroin addiction before it starts.
And we are back. We're back here again with Jimmy DeButz from the Capital Gazette Communications, as it says on his business card. And he is the associate editor, which means you're like the number two guy there, right?
I don't think there's any, there's number one, Rick, and then there's everybody else that's trying to keep the papers moving.
So it's like, Mr. America, if Rick can no longer fulfill his obligations, then you put this hash on.
Rob Pius and Arai would, I would probably, we'd have a, you know, a Game of Thrones duel and I don't watch the show, so I'm just making stuff up as I talk.
Well, there was a Game of Thrones reference in Chase Cook's article this morning when they all-
I didn't, I don't watch the show, but I got the, the reference.
Just marched out saying, shame, shame. You know, I, I don't know what goes forward with this.
You know what's interesting last night? So Gavin, Gavin's interesting to me because he sometimes will trip on his own thoughts and words. So, so he, he can, but he has moments of great eloquence. And last night-
Last night, I think he did.
Last night was one of those moments where he was only, he was begging them, saying, please let, and even not his group, but he's, I, I felt that he was talking about-
David, David and Carolyn, Harvey and everybody else.
Let us do what we know how to do, you know? And, and I think that was, I, I wanted to shake counsel and say, will you let people who know what they're doing, do it?
Yeah.
And they can, they are tripping over themselves for the last 13 years. Step aside, just, but to sit there and shuffle your papers and snidely say last night going, we're rushing the project and we have to get it right. That is such bull.
Yeah. And you look at what, like, I think John used to earlier, is like, do you look at what Gavin and his folks at Donald West, at our West Street have done? Or middle? And it's like, you know, and then we get tripped up, like the city, they'll find a way to mess things up. I mean, a mural becomes one of the central points in the last four years. And, okay, is it historic? No. Is it intriguing? Yes. Do I want to learn more about these kinds of things? Yes. And so you're right. If, if a guy who has success were previously, there was no success, even if you don't give it to him, listen to him. Listen to smart people. Bring smart people into this community and listen to them.
While you're talking about the mural, I happened to notice that in front, in the historic district, in front of the Fleet Reserve Club, there is now a mural on the brick.
Oh, nice. I have to go.
It's, it's a mosaic mural. But it's got a sailboat though, so it's-
It's probably passage.
So what, all right. So let's look at what, what actual tangible, positive things that could be done to move it along. I mean, besides locking city council up until they decide to, they used to do that with the Pope. They'd lock them into a room until they made a decision.
Well, I, I think this city council, I think every single one of them, with the exception of Rhonda Pendell Charles, now, if they didn't, now has a race on their hands far as election goes. I think there's enough people that are pissed off at this thing and about this decision, about the, the council's ineptitude to do that. I think this-
It wouldn't have been, I tell you, it wouldn't have been a campaign issue until last night. I think it was, it was kind of limping along, but everyone forgot about it for the most part. Not many people, the market house doesn't come up, come up often. But now it is back on the radar.
And, and it's going to be-
Matter of fact-
Up right before the primer.
I'd say it is now, maybe not quite, but it's at Crystal Spring level as far as issues. And it wasn't. It is now.
Yeah, you're right. And it's funny in this city, like, you know, we talk about the registered voters, more Democrats obviously double, I think than, so that doesn't matter in this, in the city. What matters is issues like this. It's weird what like Crystal Spring and, and the old faucets, that, that changed the election. And, and it was more people wanting things to stay the same. I don't know what people will do because if, I don't think the people at Annapolis want a failing market house. But I think you're right. I think this is going to actually be something that it's in itself, it's self-inflicted. That's the beauty of it. They did it to themselves.
That's a symbolism. And we said, we said that coming in, in the first segment is just that this has been just in the smack dab in the middle of the city as a reminder of the failure of local government. And that's not to say that our local government's a failure because it certainly isn't. There's been many, many, many positive things. The, the day-to-day services are offered. Everything is fine, but they got that albatross that's around their neck that just can't shed. And it's just so easy to take it off. It's just give it to the business people and then just get it off your plate.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think in a municipality, especially the size of Annapolis, if you have the roads clear when it snows.
Exactly.
There's no major, and, and you know, to the panel ladies and the council's credit, there hasn't been. I mean, they've had some success with the solar power.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can all, I mean, again, it's, you can bash city government. If we were in Frederick, if we were in Salisbury, if we're in Cumberland, we'd be having the same discussions.
Yeah.
They do a lot of things right. They're not a failure, not even close to it. All the administrations, you know, have, have had. But this one thing is just that frustrating thing that you can't, you can't get rid of.
It's, you don't want the last thing before somebody goes into a voting booth to be a negative.
Right.
And this very well could be.
That's what killed Josh Cohen.
Now, do you think Gavin, that's the elephant in the room for him is that, do you think that there's a conflict with him running for mayor and-
You know, I, I don't. And this is, and people keep bringing this up and this really-
It's a fair question.
This, this really pisses me off because, and, and to, to a degree Carolyn Marquise did this to the city, you know, don't postpone this because we're considering expanding our operations based on what you're doing. And I'm like, don't ever base your business growth on the city government doing something.
I would do the check part, but yeah, okay.
You know, I, I mean, that, that makes no sense whatsoever. But I mean, Gavin, I mean, is he, is just because he is running for mayor, and I'll throw this out to the national level. I mean, is Trump, because he's running for president, supposed to put all of his business on hold while he is? When he-
Well, yes, him, yeah.
When, when he becomes mayor.
Jimmy Carter sold his peanut farm.
Then we've got an issue. But right now, no. I mean, Gavin needs to continue. He needs to expand his businesses. He needs to figure out what he's going to do. If this is a way to, and, and he's not legally and paperally involved with this, but no, I mean, to call for him to work, you know, no, he absolutely should be. I mean, look what he's done.
And really look, and that's to me, and he, and he was saying it, the best time to do it is now. Because if he gets elected mayor.
Right.
It's going to be, it would be more of a conflict because that's your friend. Even if it's not a, a financial benefit to you, that's your friend.
But it's a fair question. I mean, it's, yeah. I mean, I think, I don't know. I mean, do I personally think he could, he could separate the two? Absolutely I do. We all know Gavin's character. We know who he is. He's a great guy and he, I think he's ethical, above board. So I believe he could do it. But it is a fair question because to Jimmy's point, if this had happened in January, where all of a sudden he was putting the bids, it, it would not pass the smell test or the optics at least.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, that's the thing. It's like, give it to him, don't give it to him, or give it to the, the group that he's supporting. But do it now. I mean, because it's not fair because obviously he's one of the, the anchors of our business community. And so, and in respect of what he's done and the fact that he's followed the, like every, all the three or four other folks that have submitted, they followed the procedure as it was prescribed to them. I think in my column, I put reasonable people, reasonable people expect reasonable results. And it's not unreasonable for them to say, for them to expect the decision to come when they said it was going to.
So last night, we, yet again, talking about putting process after the RFP was requested. But it was thrown out going, we should have a blue ribbon panel, which I think we've done panels before. I think we've done charrettes before. We've done all these things.
We just call them different things.
Can we, can, so this ridiculousness of getting, because everyone has a different view of what it should be. And you can ask me and Jimmy and John, Jimmy, John, and you could say, hey, what should it be? And we, I think the three of us have a disagreement of what could work or anything, but you're just fantasizing at that point. I feel like you have to go, you, you have to bring in the people, like fly them in, truck them in, do whatever you have. The people who operate these market houses in other cities are successful in saying, tell us how to do this.
It's not that hard. Go to Baltimore.
Right.
Go to Philadelphia.
And don't just go look around, but sit down with the operators, sit down with the vendors and say, can we pick your brain for a couple of days and-
I'm sure they'd be happy to do it because, you know, they, they know how hard it is and, or they know the struggles. Most business people I know, they, if they've had something trip them up, they don't want that to trip up the next person. trip them up, they don't want that to trip up the next person.
So I'm going to pick on the people of Annapolis now. So I mean, I think we've already picked on the city. And I wish we had another hour so we could pick on the city some more, because that's how upset I am about last night's meeting. But if you went to Ward One and said, what do you want? And they're going to say, oh, we want groceries and fresh produce. And they don't. I do not think they would support it. Because everyone lamented when Stevens shut down. And everyone I talked to, anecdotally, they hadn't been to Stevens in years. You know, it's just one of those things that people like the idea of something in town, but they don't actually go to. There was a great.
Mission Barbecue is doing great, if it was.
Well, the same thing's going on right now with Starbucks over on Forest Drive. People are saying, oh, no, we got to have Zoo Coffee, which I love Zoo Coffee. It's got to be a local business. We can't do this. We can't do that. I'm like, do you shop at Grau's?
Yeah.
Or do you go to Whole Foods? Or do you go to Giant or to Safeway?
Right. But people like the idea of Grau's. They like the idea of the local. So.
That's fine. I love the idea of a local harvester down there instead of a barbecue.
So I pick on, but.
If it's not making money, it's not good for anybody.
That said, and the mayor said this in our mayoral forum, he said, we have a world-class market, which was a bit of a stretch. And he said, shame on you if you don't go. But I've gone down, my go-to place, you know, I love Pips, you know, and Mason's lobster rolls are fantastic. If I need a quick bite, those are the places I go to. The market house doesn't, I mean, they had great pizza for a while till they pulled the guy. But you could get a quick bite at the, at, I can't pick on the vendors, really, at the market house. They actually do a pretty decent job. So I go to the locals, have you even checked it out? Have you gone there? And the answer is going to be no. So I look at the locals and say, if we had a new market house, a new, the fourth or fifth, no, I'm sorry, it would be the fifth iteration of the market house. If we had that, would you actually go? Or is it just one of those things that you would lament what we had and just have never tried it out? I, I'm looking at the people of Annapolis here and saying, you know, just walk the talk.
I think, you know, I think, again, I think it has to be a balance. It has to be, again, if I can, I think my German restaurant, my German beer garden.
You're similar on that, yes.
But it has, I do, I think it has to be that balance. And I think Gavin, you know, I'm not trying to say his bid is the one, or not his bid, excuse me, his, the group that's, he supports, Jody's group, that has the most intriguing thing to me. That has the most intriguing one. And I think, and to their point, it has to be something the locals go to, and it has to be something that tourists go to.
Which is hard.
Yeah. I mean, you go to Inner Harbor in Baltimore, there's, it's sugar, or there used to be a sugar. I may not be in there, because my daughter would go in there all the time. Yeah, they're going to pop in there. But that's, you can't rely on locals to go in there.
Well, look at, so I said before, I said, we don't have a crab house in Annapolis. And someone would, at this point, go, well, what about Buddy's? I defy you, and nothing against Harvey, I defy you to find a local, you'd have a hard time finding locals go to Buddy's, because it's not a locals' place. And, you know, so again, nothing against it.
Yeah, Cantler's would probably be where everybody goes.
Yeah. And even Cantler's, like, you go to, that's kind of, I don't know. But if I could wave a wand, you know, and I've never owned a business like that, so of course I know everything about it. But I have a crab house down there, you know? And then there's probably 15 different reasons why that wouldn't work. You know, and that's my point, is that everyone thinks, it's sort of like, everyone wants to own a bar or a restaurant, because they think it would be cool. And then you get into it and realize that.
It's a work.
But everyone thinks they can run a particular business. And that's how the market house, everyone has an opinion about what, what the city's doing wrong, and how can they make it work? And the reality is probably, is that maybe it can't work the way it is.
Again, again.
But my point is, the city better, but they're not recognizing that. And they better recognize that. They've, they've shown time and time again, that they're horrible at this, and they're not learning from that mistake.
Right. Is it, can it work as a market house?
I don't know if it can.
And if it can't, then you need to leave it to the people that know how to make.
So, so you look, we've had.
I had a great suggestion on Twitter this morning, off of the article that I wrote on what happens. I sent this column meter and said, raise it, paint lines on it.
Right.
And surround it with food trucks and rent food trucks calls on a daily basis.
Yeah. And you could, yeah, you could rotate those. That'd be fine to rotate those. That'd be great. We would welcome that kind of rotation.
I love that. The downtown restaurants would scream.
Oh, yeah.
But that said, like, if you think about the, and again, I'm not picking on any downtown restaurants, but I think they try to be a little everything to everybody sometimes. And we've, we've been critical of the downtown restaurants, like the ones at Market Square. With a couple notable exceptions, I think Iron Rooster has a great local following.
Right.
Pips, the hot dog place, has got a great local following. But if I want a quick bite in Annapolis, it's very difficult to do that. So maybe, maybe that's not the worst suggestion.
Nothing happens in a vacuum. So the market house is where it is. And if we want locals to go down there, and I know, this goes back to, the master plan was passed right before Cohen got.
2009? Yeah, 2009.
And so, again, there's people, reasonable people can say, you know, we want to change it. We don't like it. But they passed it, and then the new administration came on and they dropped it, which is, that's their right. But I will always contend, because I've seen it happen in Greenville, South Carolina, Birmingham, Alabama. If you have green space, people will use it. And people will go downtown. I have dog. I see dog people all over the city. I don't know where you think they do their business, but they do it in the street. If you had a dog, you know, if you made City Dock more attractive to locals, you'd have more local people go down there, and more people would, would use it. So I think that whatever happens at Market House needs to be thinking long-term. And I know, it's funny to me, all the business, I did a story a few years ago on the future of vision for Annapolis and measure that. And the business people don't want to lose a single parking spot downtown, because it'll drive them out of business. When they redid the bulkhead, 40, 50, 60 spaces were unusable for six months. How many places, how many places went, how many places went out of business?
That's an interesting point.
So it takes leadership, it takes vision. And I don't, I'm not egotistical, think I have the only vision that would work, or that I have all, any right answers. But.
John does.
What's working, yeah, John is going to give us the, but what's, what is the process and the results from what they're doing now isn't working. Obviously, with the market house, is not working. So, you know, I think it was a rush. I think it was stupid that they tried to rush this in six months or whatever. But once you set that in, those.
You look worse at the end of this process.
Yeah.
Last night was, again, I've said this 15,000 times, but last night was appalling. It just demonstrated what's wrong. And I don't know, maybe I've gotten pessimistic about the market house. I don't know if there's anything you can do. If you go through Annapolis, depending on the ward, everyone's going to have a different thought as to what goes in there. And to be honest with you, if there was a way to sell it, I would say just sell it. Because water finds its own level. If you have money invested in that, you have skin in the game, you have to force a way to make it work. And I think the city, it doesn't matter if it's sitting empty for years, or if it's running, it doesn't really matter to the city.
And look at the people, that's a very prime location when the foot traffic is already heavy. I would say people that have had success on Middle West Street, if they can make things work there and build a cluster of success there, why couldn't they do that? They would, they would find creative ways to get, to make it work. And if that doesn't work, then John's idea of raising it and putting food trucks.
I think, I think a lot of, and it'd be interesting, this would be something to put your people on in the Capitol, because you got all the resources. But there's a certain entitlement to restaurants, the closer they get to the water, to feel that my water view, my proximity to the water, to the hub of downtown, can excuse my food. Not all restaurants, but some.
Oh, but that's like a Times Square effect. You go to New York, you know? No one goes, hey, there's a great restaurant at Times Square.
Yeah, you do that. But I mean, it'd be interesting to look at like the Yelp reviews and whatnot, and start out at parole.
Oh, as you move inward. So it's like five stars in parole, and you lose, you lose a star for every mile closer you get.
If you get down there, you get down there on the water, and it's, you know, this is no, this is no good.
Well, because we are in a very difficult position that is not abnormal to a tourist destination. But when you're a business owner, do you pick a horse, saying, I'm going to be for the locals, or I'm going to be for the tourists? Can you be everything to everybody? Or, because, you know, you see that with the restaurants in the winter, where they're just kind of bemoaning, where are all the locals? I'm like, well, you didn't have time for us in the summer, you know? And with substandard food, and it is. I could pick on a couple of restaurants right now that are coasting on the location. And I'm not picking on local business, but it's true. And I have some phenomenal restaurants over in Eastport, you know, that, to be fair, I won't name them, just because, but that are phenomenal, that don't have the same views.
Because if you said Ben 909, that'd be discreet.
I love that place.
And I've not been to Flomato or Western Annapolis, but I hear that's been a fantastic.
But, but to your point, you know, can, can you have something successful that's down by the water that's not tourist-based?
You know, I think, I think you could. I mean, you.
I mean, Iron Rooster does it, Pips does it.
I think Carolyn David Marquis had some gist of a good idea in there, and bringing some aspect to visit Annapolis down into that. I don't know that, I'm all on board with the kiosks, just buy tickets to all your attractions and whatnot. But to be, maybe to have a little outpost part of that. That brings the customers, the tourists, in, find information about the city, maps for walking tours, maybe to find out where to go buy your watermark ticket, or whatever it may be. But then it also brings them into the area where presumably, hopefully, locals are going to be dining, eating, et cetera. I mean, it could work. But the city has just woefully not done their homework, and they were woefully unprepared to put this forward. It was done prematurely. I get that Joe Budge wanted to get it done before, and that was very admirable of him to say, hey, you know, we've got a lease ascending at the end of the year. We need to do something about it.